All set? Okay. I'd like to call this August 8th, Special Session of Hoyok City Council to order. I'm just gonna read your name alphabetically for simplicity's sake on my part to make sure, see who's here and who's not. I see Counselor Bartley is here. Counselor Bresnahan, not here. Counselor Graney?
Here.
Counselor Jordan is here. Counselor Leahy, not here. Counselor LeBrol Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Lisi?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor McGee, not here. Counselor McGivern?
Here.
Counselor Roman?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Tallman?
Here.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Valentin?
Here.
All right, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
We have a one-item agenda, ladies and gentlemen, and that is called of a special meeting by yours truly, the city council president. Please be advised that a special meeting of the Hoyok City Council will be held on Tuesday, August 8th at 6:15. The agenda is a one-item agenda, and that is the matter taken up by the Joint Committee on the City Council and School Committee, and that is regarding an appropriation of funding for the accelerated repairs project to repair Sullivan, Morgan, and Kelly schools. It was informed to us that this matter was time-sensitive and needed to be approved prior to August 30th. And so therefore, in support of that, there was also a specific order introduced hand-in-hand with that that comes to us by way of the city auditor, which says that the city council vote to approve a bond request for the MSBA accelerated repairs projects. Total bond amount needed is $275,000 with an expected reimbursement of 80% for a total city cost of $55,000. So I would now also, hand-in-hand with that, like to take up the committee report, which is here. And that is the Committee on, Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee, to whom was referred an order that the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee review and make recommendations to the city council regarding the appropriation of funding for the accelerated repairs project to repair Sullivan, Morgan, and Kelly School. This matter is time-sensitive, needs to be approved before August 30th. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, counselors Roman, Sullivan, and LeBrol Martinez. I would recommend to the chairman that he make a motion to adopt this committee report as well as to pass the first reading on the bond request.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
So the motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report as well as to pass the first reading on the bond request, that is two readings required on that. We can do them both the same evening. And under that, I'll give, turn it over to the chairman, Counselor Roman, for any discussion or if he wants to suspend any rules to let anybody else speak. Please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I want to thank my committee members for meeting yesterday and the members of the school committee who are here this evening and Dr. Zrake. Again, I want to applaud Dr. Zrake and his team who did come to us immediately once this became approved. It was a really enlightening night. The city had applied for these accelerated grant programs, and initially it was for four schools. And they did this at the same time when they had applied for, well, our body has already approved the exploration of building two new schools in the city, the last appropriation that we have done. And normally and historically, from what we heard from Dr. Zrake, they were almost certain as a district that we weren't gonna get chosen for this accelerated grant project as well. But to their surprise, at the end of June, they received notification that Sullivan, Kelly, and Morgan schools were accepted under this program. So this was a shocker in a good way to the district. And this specific accelerated grant fund program, repair program would cover Sullivan's roof and windows, Kelly's doors and windows and boilers, and Morgan School's windows. And this all goes hand-in-hand and in tandem with the districts. They brought in the state to look at and assess all of the buildings and properties of the city of Hoyoke in the school systems and see where they were at. These specific properties or these specific schools are gonna be online or be with the district for the next couple of years. They will not be torn down, they will not be removed. So this accelerated grant program would be with that. I thank Counselor Lopez for attending as well last night. Our committee had robust conversations and discussions. I thank Counselor Sullivan too, who asked, what is the reimbursement timetable? We didn't have a funding mechanism yesterday, Mr. President, and I know that came through to the body today, but that was our largest concern for conversation. Some of my colleagues and myself were hesitant or wondering about the bonding levels, and I know we've gotten some notifications today from our city treasurer, which we're excited to discuss as well. So I would like allow, to allow Sandy and Dr. Zrake to speak. And Counselor Sullivan actually gave Dr. Zrake, who was with the state this morning, speaking about the previous project, as to whether or not we could delay this timetable if this body doesn't agree with the funding mechanism before us today. And Dr. Zrake, I believe, has an answer to that question as well. It seemed like a good project overall that we all supported overwhelmingly as a committee. We think that these three schools are in need of repair. We think that the assessment done by the district, Dr. Zrake and his team, was sufficient, but we were all just truly concerned about the funding mechanism. The will of the committee members were more along the discussion of either a transfer, and that's just the brass tacks of the financing portion, versus a bond, or when free cash gets certified, you could put that money back into that line item. We just approve our city budget, there's no free cash certified. And we made it clear as the committee last night that we cannot approve something without a funding mechanism. So when we approved the committee report, it was with the contingent that the mayor did provide us with a funding mechanism because we can't appropriate from our body. And so this is where we arrived at. And so I do know that the mayor would like to bond for it. I'm gonna leave that to the will of my colleagues. But I still think this project needs to happen, but I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules in case any of my colleagues do have a question for Dr. Zrake or Sandy or anyone else.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow Dr. Zrake as well as our city treasurer to address the council if needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I did want to just continue, there is some additional language regarding the actual specific motion on the bond, so I did see that, and I wanted to read that to you. And again, this is under first reading. So that the city of Hoyok appropriate the amount of $275,000 for the purpose of paying cost of conducting a feasibility study to identify improvements and updates to building windows, doors, roof at Lieutenant Claire Sullivan Elementary School, a 112,000 square foot school building originally constructed in 1960 located at 400 Jarvis Avenue. Building partial windows and doors at the Morgan School, a 62,397 square foot building constructed in 1963 located at 596 South Bridge Street. And building partial windows, doors, and boilers at the Dr. Marcella R. Kelly School, 86,302 square foot school building constructed in 1975 on a 2.66 acre lot located at 216 West Street, Hoyoke. Including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto for which the city of Hoyoke may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Hoyok City Council. To meet this appropriation, the city council with approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The city of Hoyoke acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any cost the city of Hoyoke incurs in excess of any grant approved by or received from the MSBA would be the sole responsibility of the city of Hoyoke. And that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding that may be executed between the city of Hoyoke and the MSBA. We may want to amend to also add the Bartley amendment here. I don't see the Bartley amendment language in here, which is that if, that there should be no material change in the spending of this project other than these three purposes without a prior authorization of the city council. So you can't say, well, we're going to go build, fill in the blanks, something at Hoyoke, you know, a new tower on top of Hoyoke High School or something. You would have to get prior authorization. These funds are specifically for this purpose. So motion on the floor is that there shall be no change in this funding purpose without a prior, a prior vote of the Hoyok City Council. That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of amending it with that language?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That's standard language now in all our bond authorizations. Any discussion, counselors? At first reading, Counselor Sullivan.
Yes, well, I have a question for Sandy on the mechanics here of it.
Sure. Madam Treasurer? Just make sure the mic's on.
Hello? Yes.
So my question would be, the way I understand the mechanics of this work is the contractors would present an invoice to the city, and once the invoice is approved, it's processed electronically through Boston and only takes a matter of days for that money to come back to the city. So if what we're paying that contractor is only a 20% of that invoice, in regular business, and when we pay contractors, submit an invoice, they usually get paid within 30 days, don't we have enough time in the window or is there something different in the mechanics of how this works that we should be trying to raise any more than 20% of the cost, not 100% of the cost?
Well, first of all, you have to front the money, the $275,000, before you can get reimbursed. So what happens is, the city council approves the $275,000, that is put into place. I call the bond council and they will give me the proper paperwork. Then we follow through with whatever the requirements are. This particular is a feasibility study, so it will have to go out to bid through the procurement officer. We get the right person for the feasibility study, and then we start paying the bills. Once all the bills are paid, then the treasurer sends out the proper paperwork to MSBA, and then within 30 days, they reimburse us. Right now, we have finished the project for Morgan on the boilers, which the city council had approved, $975,000. That took probably about a year. We are now in the process of being reimbursed, the 80%. So projects are not done like a private industry. The city with the municipality, it takes time to process things.
Okay, but from the time that an invoice is submitted by a contractor?
Yes.
So we, we submit it to the state for reimbursement, but they can, they can take much longer than 30 days?
Well, the thing is, we're not, they, we don't submit an invoice every time we pay it. It's in a group to be reimbursed. Because we're not gonna submit an invoice for $1,000 and get 80% back, which would be 200. So we don't do it that way. It's a lot easier to get the project done and then submit our invoices to MSBA. So if there's any issues, we can address them and correct them.
Okay, but this one here, this is just, just for a feasibility study?
Correct. But I don't know if there's gonna be one vendor, if there's gonna be two vendors. I don't know what the, it would be up to the procurement officer to decide on when he, she puts out the bids.
So they finish their work, then they, they submit an invoice?
Correct.
And that can still take up to a year to get the money back?
No. And that, this is a feasibility study. What I was comparing was repairs. Morgan School, there was two schools involved with boilers, so we had several vendors that we had to deal with. We had to deal with an OPM that oversees the work and then the contractors. With a feasibility study, it probably would take less time, but it's still time-consuming. It's not something that we can get the money back in 30 days. If we did, that would be awesome.
Okay, that answers my question.
Counselor LeBrol Martinez?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the bond. Once we lock in to the bond, how, I mean, can that money, once we accrue the money back, can we put it back in that or no? Or you're stuck with the bond? Is it a 10-year kind of lock-in or what, what's the deal?
Well, I would assume you're gonna take either some sort of anticipatory note that we could pay off in advance. Usually they don't do the long term, we got like five years?
Correct. So what it would be is, the bond council would approve $275,000. That means you have the right to spend up to $275,000 on this study. If the study is less and we get it in, what happens is at the end of every year, every fiscal year, if we don't have a project that is complete, the treasurer is obligated to take out bans. Bans are short-term notes on a bond that once the project is complete, then we take out the bond. In this situation, it could be a $50,000 expense. So therefore, I'd pick up the phone and say, hey, that project only costs 50, they would bond for 50. And they always, bond council always takes into consideration the MSBA reimbursement always, when it comes to school projects.
The question is that, can we pay it like before? You know what I'm saying? Like, once we receive the money, pay the bond? Or do we get stuck with the bond for so many years?
Reimbursable.
Okay. Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Sandy, the feasibility study, is that reimbursable by this grant and by the MSBA?
According to the school department, yes. It is 80%.
I want to know if the state is saying yes.
I can't honestly say that.
I can't vote for this if we don't know if we're gonna get reimbursed for a $275,000 feasibility study.
According to, I'll let Dr. Zrake answer.
Sandy, what type of interest before I, Steve, you can go on one sec, please. What type of interest are we looking at if, once we borrow?
On a bond, it would probably be about 2%, whatever the going rate is, it's, I'd have to get that.
Are we responsible for the borrowing costs?
The city would take on the full responsibility.
No reimbursement?
Right. But keep in mind, with an MSBA project, I make sure that the bond council knows that this is a feasibility study for the school. They usually will contact MSBA and say, is this going to be reimbursed at whatever the percentage is, which is usually 80%. So they will use that flexibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Zrake, do you want to address the limited point about feasibility studies being covered? Because we've had these before.
Yes, it is covered. 80% would be covered for the feasibility study, yes.
Doctor, if I could just add on to my question. What, I have no problem with the scope of work. I have no problem, and I understand, I mean, we looked at these schools for years. I have no problem Whitney Anderson's name is on this. I no doubt that these are repairs that are not just needed but prioritized, and I'm, you know, I'm fine with that. My question though is, we know what we need. Why is it costing $275,000 to do a study?
So I'm gonna let, can I, can I ask Mr. Anderson? Because he's the one who scoped out the work, so.
Motion to expand our rule exemption, suspension to allow Whitney Anderson of the school department to also address the city council. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So move with Whitney.
First of all, thank you for taking your time to be here this evening. I realize it's an imposition at a time in which you normally have for yourself and your family. In regards to the scope of work, we have delineated that to the information you see before you. Mr. McGivern has, Counselor McGivern has said that there's a great understanding about what we're talking about as far as the practicality of these repairs. We have hard costs in regards to achieving these. These is the actual construction elements of windows, replacement of doors and boilers and stuff like that, and the, and the aspects of what happens during that process. And we have soft costs. We have designers. The state protocol calls for a owner's project manager to represent us, the city, on our behalf, to make sure that the process is focused particularly and specifically on what these matters are at hand. Now, in regards to that, these are costs that we incur in order to establish the scope of the project. You notice in the motion language, it said partial in certain instances. Some of these schools have newer additions to them. So if we're putting windows into Morgan School, for instance, Morgan School had an addition done in 1989. So those windows still have good value to them. So the windows that were put into the original structure in 1960 are those of which will be replaced. So we have to establish the scope of the work within the confines of what has been allowed us in order to make accurate representation for the specification in order to go out to bid to get the best cost as possible. And that's what this costs now for the owner's project manager and combination of the architectural and engineering firms necessary in order to specify what we need. That is what we're purchasing now. There is no.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're, you're doing a good job, I think, of answering my question, but is this more than a feasibility study? Is this part of the design phase?
It's a requirement of the MSBA. It's the first threshold that we have to reach in order to be brought into the grant program.
Would, would there be more design cost after this, after this threshold is met?
There will be applications of design elements that will have to observe the constructions as it takes place, and that is the additional cost in it, on top of this. So actually, when the work is taking place, that will result in a slightly extended cost, but not for the design purpose.
So we're, to obtain the grant, we're required to spend $275,000 upfront?
Yes.
That they'll reimburse 80%?
Yes.
And who picks the contractors?
The state. The contractors are through the open bidding process.
Locally or state?
Pardon me, the, the OPM for the actual design service and for the, for the work in which we're talking about now, these contractors are supplied by the state in order to expedite this process and make it a, so there is no procurement for the design service.
Who picks them?
The state does.
State does?
Yes.
In your humble professional opinion, is this a good use of taxpayers' dollars?
Absolutely. 20 cents, 20 cents on the dollar.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah. Whitney, before you go, you know, you've obviously been doing your role for quite a long time, and we've talked, I mean, some of these schools, particularly the windows, and I know I've talked to Steve before, are in particularly deplorable condition. You can't even see through the windows.
They are.
You know, they're like transparent fuzz at this point, really totally unsuitable for a school. Question is, in your best guesstimate, obviously this is 275 tonight to do the study, but what are we looking at for total repairs here? Is this gonna be a 2 million, 3 million, 4 million? I mean, do you have even a ballpark of what the, this could come back, I mean, we need for improvements here?
The city's burden will be approximately 3 to 4 million dollars.
3 or 4 million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
The total job cost will be approximately 12 to 14.
Oh, so the, the work, we're talking 12, 12 or 14 million, the city's share being?
20% of that.
20% of that? Okay. All right. So we'll just add that to the, to the laundry list. All things that need to be done, there's no question about it.
We're not talking bricks and mortar. The buildings are good, the ones that we're investing in, that we recommend investment in, are part of the portfolio, your portfolio for years to come.
Sure.
We're talking about an infrastructure here of 500 to 600 billion dollars.
Yeah.
It is the, the city's greatest asset as far as its tangible real estate.
True. I'm just saying, I just want counselors to be aware that there's this 3, 4 million dollars coming down the pike. We've got a litany of bond requests sitting in finance right now, from anything from traffic improvements to this and that. So maybe Sandy, at one, some point, you might want to just give the council, if you have a moment, a list of current indebtedness, where we're at with all this, and then if we approved everything that's in the hopper, take a look at total indebtedness. That might be helpful for us just to keep our eye on. Next up in the queue is Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Thanks for asking all my questions, but I appreciate that. So, they're good questions. Now, hold on, Whitney, stay right there, or maybe Dr. Zrake. So when it comes to, and I'm gonna have a follow-up with Sandy in a minute, because Kevin asked, the one question I wanted to ask, which is the project cost, ultimately 12 to 14 at this stage, I mean, a bird's eye view, and I appreciate that. So city of Hoyoke's obligation would be 20% of that, meaning what? Another bond request? Is that what Sandy's saying? That's what Dr. Zrake is saying? Okay, so that'll be another bond request, so somewhere down the road. Okay, thanks, Whitney. Sandy, I got a question for you. So, and so that's, you know, I really appreciate Kevin's request because I really was interested in, and I don't think, you know, if you're prepared to answer a question tonight, that's great, but I, I'm not putting you in a spot, but at some point, i.e. for the next city council meeting, which is the first Tuesday in September, I think it's the 5th, it should be nice to know the, what is the bonding capacity of the city? And if we could get something from, maybe from bond council?
Yeah. I did do, I believe I presented something June 30th to either the finance committee, and then he was supposed to pass them on to the city council, but I'll be more than happy to email you because I had, I had been told beforehand what you guys wanted on your wish list, which was the vehicles for DPW, the, you know, yeah, yeah. So Cinder was very nice to give me a spreadsheet and how much it would cost the city. I just didn't bring it tonight, but I did bring it, I believe, at the finance committee when you guys were doing the budget, and I'll be more than happy to email you it again.
So if, so you, yeah, because I'm not on that finance committee, and that information hasn't been disseminated to me. So if you wouldn't mind just communicating to the whole city council?
Yep, I'll be more than happy to email it to you.
Okay. So there's that. And then, at some point, Sandy, does the city of Hoyoke, is there a cap on bond capacity?
Yes, there is.
There would be a cap?
I don't want to, I know you guys might know what it is, but I hate to tell it to you because it's kind of like a credit card. It's like, you know, on a personal level, you see, ooh, I got X amount of dollars and I max it out. I believe the city can bond for 25 mil.
Now.
Don't hold me to it.
So I would be looking for, no, I'd be looking for that number, but I would be looking to see, how is that number determined?
Right.
So is that a, is that a percentage of the city budget? Is it a historical?
Well, again, it's not a percentage of the city budget. It's basically our rating, which is basically what we have. It's our fiscal audit report. They base it on that. And it depending on the project. It could be a 10-year, like with the trucks for DPW, that bond will probably be a 5 to 10, and that's kind of pushing it because they're, they're depreciationable at a faster rate. When you put money into a building, it could be a longer, maybe a 30-year bond as opposed to a 10 or 15. So there's where the variance is between what is, what we would have to pay for principal and interest over the years.
Thank you.
Counselor Lisi? Thank you. Thanks for coming down, Sandy. I think my questions are going to be directed at Mr. Anderson. So if you don't mind coming back up, Whitney. Thanks for coming down and thanks for clarifying, you know, the way that the, the spending on the schools in terms of bricks and mortar is going to be dramatically more than what we see before us. So when I hear the storyline that was presented to us, it sounds like these grant applications were submitted and three of the four applications that were submitted were approved.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, is the, like, so did we ask for these dollar amounts in our, in our grant proposal?
Their, their technical term, the MSBA's technical term, we have been now invited to participate.
Mm-hmm. So we're invited to participate, and then the numbers that are generated that arrive us?
That you see before you.
Yep, arrive, they, they arrive to 275K?
Yes.
Is there like categorical fees for services, like a roof assessment by a designer at 25K?
Yes. Actually, what those are, those are historical figures that come from the MSBA's website of accelerated repair projects that have been undertaken recently in other communities.
Okay.
For similar-sized buildings, for similar-type work.
So you took those numbers and you put them into the grant and said, this is the scope of the work that, that we need, and therefore, our applications were approved based on the scope and the type of work?
Yes, and that should approximately be our cost.
Okay.
Not to exceed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Graney? Yeah, quickly, from what I understand, Mr. Anderson, this is a three, three-point situation.
situation. First situation is the money that we're talking about tonight, but we now know the estimated overall cost of the project.
Yes.
The second tier would be the feasibility study, and that would establish actually what these schools really need. I would assume that's what the feasibility is for.
Yes.
And the third step in this process would go out to bid, and when all the bids are in, that is when we will know the full cost of what this project is going to be.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions? Council Roman?
Final thought, and thank you, and Whitney talked about this to my colleague, Consulor Lisi. The last appropriation of eight-hundred thousand that we put for that feasibility study, we're actually under cost currently for that, correct, Whitney?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so I just wanted to share with my colleagues that the same process happened for our last one, and for that project, we are currently under cost. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote on passing the first reading as well as adoption of the committee report. Council Bartley?
Yeah, I don't think we got Council McGivern's question answered by Dr. Schreick.
Which question was that?
Well, I thought the question was, what kind of a, I mean, we hear from the school department that we're confident we're going to get reimbursed, but what do we have from the Commonwealth saying that they're going to reimburse us? So, Dr. Schreick, want to address that?
Maybe you could talk a little bit about the invitation?
So, doctor, I mean, why are you saying to us that you're confident? What's the basis?
Because we, we've already, we're already in another project with them for the new school building that's going to, at the Lawrence site. The reimbursement rate that's been told to us is eighty percent. Prior projects that Hoyoke has had, the boilers that went in at Morgan and Ian White, were at eighty percent. So that's the historical reimbursement that Hoyoke has gotten, and we've received the same indication for these future projects as well. In terms of the invitation, we came to the City Council in February, like we do annually with a statement of interest, so it is an application to be invited. It is not common to be invited. Many times, many years, Hoyoke's been rejected, and many communities are. We were fortunate that we were accepted, well, a few years ago, the city was accepted for the Lawrence, it was initially the McMahon Project that is now at Lawrence School, and we frankly were surprised, because we got passed over in the first round, and then in the June round, which was, is not, not common that they accept people at that stage, we received notification that we were invited to be part of the process. For us, from my perspective as a school leader, when we look at the portfolio of schools, we did a full assessment and audit, a master facilities plan, when we proposed the two middle schools, and what I've been asked quite a bit from the community is, well, what are you going to do to invest in the schools that are sticking around in the portfolio? So we know that Lawrence will make a big impact for kids and teachers in buildings where, frankly, we can't even open windows in a lot of those schools right now, and you certainly, in some cases, can't see through the windows.
Well, Steve, just to boil it down.
Yeah.
I'd like to punch.
Sure.
Just, okay, just hone in there. So we have, based on historical precedent, your belief that the city would be reimbursed the eighty percent, but we don't have anything beyond that at this stage?
I'm a hundred percent, I'm a hundred percent sure it's eighty percent.
No, the eighty percent, I feel, there's no question about the eighty percent. My question to you, just to take an offshoot of what he's asking, is, based on your professional opinion about the indications you've been given, so do you feel this project will be approved, and that we will get the reimbursement that's expected here, the eighty percent of the two-seventy-five? Not so much the eighty percent number, but just approval at the rate, that the SBA will in fact approve this project?
I have no question that they will. I was just there today about the other project, so no question.
Well, Mr. President, I mean, so that being, I'm glad you're confident, and if you're confident, I'll be confident. Can we make this contingent? Is that, is that, is it possible to do that? So to make this bond contingent upon?
Not really, because the only contingency, and it's in the language, which is pretty standard, is you're passing this knowing that this is non-entitled money. They could say ultimately, "No." You really have no other assurance other than the professionals' opinion saying, "We believe this will be approved." They don't say, they don't hand out authorization letters that says, "Guaranteed approval, sign here." Unfortunately, that's not the way their system works. They give these things called, you know, invitations to bid, and, you know, that's sort of the way their lingo is. Yeah. I think that's about the best assurance you're going to get. Council Graney?
Just quickly, one more comment, Mr. President. It's obvious that these buildings need the repair, and once again, I hate to kick in the safety feature of our kids, but that is definitely something that I want to make sure that we do. We have to make sure that our kids are in safe, secure schools, and we need to bond for this feasibility study to see what we need. So I'd like to move the question.
I will also say, we're going to know where we stand on the two-seventy-five before we ever get to the twelve to fourteen million, right? The city clearly.
Exactly.
The city could never afford twelve or fourteen million dollars, right? I think we can all agree on that. We'll be all we can to afford the three million or four million, our portion of it, so we'll know where we stand with everything very, very soon, certainly before that vote. Okay, any other thoughts, comments, concerns? Council Valentin?
Just quickly, just for clarity, this vote is ten votes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all bond authorizations are ten.
And the motion?
Okay. On the motion to pass the first reading, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading.
As amended.
As amended, yes, as amended. We already adopted the amendment, which is that if there's any change in the purpose, it requires a subsequent vote of the City Council. That's in the, that's in the language. Any, under second reading, any discussion? Hearing none. I will take this to a vote, and this will be by a roll-call vote. Ten votes are required, and I'm just going to read them alphabetically for simplicity's sake.
My first name?
Counselor Bartley? Yes. Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Jordan votes yes. Counselor LeBrow Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Lisi?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Roman?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Toman?
Yes.
Counselor Vacan?
Yes.
Counselor Valentin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body, thirteen, strike that, twelve to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. We stand adjourned.
For any of you who have items on the ordinance committee agenda, we're starting now.